Welcome everyone to the October 29th Eugene City Council Work Session. Welcome everyone here at home. Before we begin, I've talked to Chris, but the Winter Strategies Meeting of the Poverty and Homeless Board starts at 1:30, so I'm going to leave a little bit early if we're not done. Chris will pick it up from there. All right. We're going to hear about something very important to us today, in particular, I think, because of the struggle we've had for maintenance and all these other challenges that we face. So I'm looking forward to this conversation when we're here about the good, the bad, and never about anything ugly, right now.
Beautiful.
Hi. Yep, we're going to have the State of Parks and Recreation today in Eugene, and I'm happy to be here in John's place. As most of you know, I started my career with the City of Eugene in parks, and I've also worked in recreation, so this is a place near and dear to my heart, and I'm excited to hear what they have to say. So let's turn it over to one of the Crags.
Great, great, thank you.
Craig squared.
Hello, and thanks for having us today. So this is Craig Carnegie, the Division Manager of Parks and Open Space, and I'm Craig Smith, the Division Manager of Recreation. We're here today to provide a Parks and Recreation update from the presentation council received in 2010 on the funding gap in Parks and Recreation System. At that time, council approved a motion to develop some funding options for that challenge. Of course, as you're all aware, we had other budgetary challenges to deal with since then. So today is about coming back to you and bringing the conversation up to the front again. For today, this is a brief outline of our presentation. We do have you for 90 whole minutes.
(laughter) You don't have to use a lot of time.
Okay, uh-oh. So what we thought we'd do actually is add a little bit of a brief look into the history of Parks and Recreation for you, so that might be a bit enjoyable. And then I'll give an update on Recreation Services since 2010. I'll turn it over to Craig Carnegie, and he'll talk about Parks and Open Space since 2010. He'll draw together the conclusion, and then we'll have time for some question and answers. So, brief history, key moments in Parks and Recreation. In 1905, the city adopted a charter stating that "The City of Eugene may purchase, hold, and receive property for use as city parks upon the recommendation of the Library Board." Which is a bit odd, back then in 1900s, the Board had such authority, I guess, but in essence, it only took one year for somebody to step up, and it was Thomas Hendrix that in 1906 stepped up and donated 47 acres of land in southeast Eugene. And when bolstered by the city's purchase of its additional 31 acres, Hendrix Park was formed, which also then created the Parks Department. In 1908, a bond measure was passed that led to purchase of property along the Willamette River, and thus in 1914 Skinner Butte Park was dedicated. It was one of the first parks that was part of the goal of acquiring as much property as we could along the Willamette River corridor. The first tax levy to support recreation programs in the park system occurred in 1927. It was the first public recreation and playground fund, and it was followed by the creation of the Playground Commission, marking essentially the unofficial beginnings of the recreation component of our park and recreation system. Now, that Playground Commission had great plans for the citizens of Eugene back in 1927, but then the stock market crashed in 1929, and they had to delay some of those plans. So despite the impact of the Depression in the 1930s, a young lawyer by the name of Wayne Morris headed up a campaign to raise money via donations to buy Spencer's Butte to prevent it from being logged. Thousands of people essentially bought a part of the Butte in small donations. This was followed up by a gentleman named Francis Wilkins, who was 90 years old at the time, and a member of the Park Commission, who pushed hard for a tax levy, and was quoted in the Eugene Daily News as saying, "Remember, Eugene boys and girls will be climbing Spencer Butte in the next 50 to 100 years from today, to be inspired by looking over a city built to the very foot of this Butte." So the tax levy passed in 1938, and we acquired the Butte. So now, some 80 years later, there's a recreation staff at Amazon Community Center, his name is Josh Lucci, and he takes middle school youth hiking up to Spencer's Butte as part of his counseling and training program, and he gets them up there, and as they're sitting and looking over the city, he asks them, "Here's your city, it's up to you to decide what kind of place you want it to be." In the 1940s, the population of Eugene is about 22,000 people. In the mid-'40s, civic leaders Howard Buford and William Tugman established the Century Progress Fund as a financial entity to continue long-term fundraising for parkland acquisition. In 1944, the Eugene Recreation Commission was formed, because although Eugene had been successful in acquiring parkland, there were very few playgrounds, there were no swimming pools, and there was very limited any type of recreation program. So in 1945, Mayor Earl McNutt joined with student-led groups from both Eugene and Springfield to seek donations for the first summer playground program. Their slogan was "Anything for the Kids." They raised some funds, and during the first week of programming, there were 1,500 kids in attendance. So in 1946, Parks and Recreation, essentially two different departments at that time, did join together to become the Parks and Recreation Department. John January, a gentleman by the name of John January, was appointed the first Parks and Recreation Superintendent, and he initially started out having formal conversations with the school district to begin a partnership in sharing space and providing programs for our youth. He also developed the first youth sports program, and he strongly emphasized at the time that recreation should be provided for all youth. So in 1947, we built our first community center. If you recognize that this is Washington Park, still there today, still using it as a community center, okay? And maybe you might recognize this, this is our first swimming pool, Jefferson Memorial Pool, built in 1948. It had a lifespan, I think, of 34 years. It was tore down in 1982. I think there was an issue with the bubble that was put over it to try and make it an indoor pool, and the bubble kind of burst, so to speak, so, okay. In the 1950s, Eugene's population jumped to over 36,000 people, and the next Parks and Recreation Superintendent was a U of O graduate in landscape architecture named Tex Matzler. According to Matzler, the Parks and Recreation System was not keeping up with the speedy growth of the community, which at the time had 11 mostly undeveloped parks. According to Matzler, he stated, "I believe the city has come a long way in the last three years with its Parks and Recreation development. However, I feel the city has been delinquent in three geographic regions." Common again today. So he did identify one of the neighborhoods that needed a park was in West Eugene, which at that time meant West Moreland. Also significant, in 1951, Mr. and Mrs. George Owens donated land for the Rose Garden. And in 1954, Eugene Rhododendron Society created the Rhododendron Garden in Hendrix In 1960s, the population of Eugene was over 50,000 people, and in the spring of that year, a park levy failed. According to the Register Guard, described the setting as this, "This marks the first time in the history that people have ever, that people have failed to pass a parks measure. Without further financing, Eugene's park system will stand still. With increasing costs of operation, it could begin to deteriorate." That was from the Register Guard. So in 1961, a woman by the name of Betty Nevin, remember that name, that person? She was the first woman to be on the Eugene Planning Commission, and she took the lead in chairing the Parks and Recreation Commission at that time, and created what was called the First Parks Study Group, in which her and her team initiated many levels of conversation and engagement with the public to find out specifically what residents of Eugene wanted to have as part of their Parks and Recreation System. This level engagement created extensive support for the Parks and Recreation throughout the next several decades, actually, passing multiple levies and bonds that helped further develop the park system, and also created a boom in recreation facilities, sometimes referred to as the golden era of recreation. Those are the facilities built during that area, and in 1969, the city of Eugene did win the National Gold Medal Award for Excellence in the Field of Parks and Recreation Management. In the 1970s, a gentleman by the name of Ed Smith had taken over for Matzler as the Parks and Recreation Superintendent, but he continued a theme that Matzler had dreamt of in developing the Ridgeline Trail System. According to a story, again, in the Register Guard, Matzler was walking with Alton Baker, and he pointed out to the ridgeline running from Spencer Butte. "That green ridge is a beautiful backdrop to this city," he told them, "a setting thousands of cities would love to have, but it won't always be there unless the city acts now to preserve it." So the acquisition of the Ridgeline Trail property for the park system has been a goal for decades and continues to be so today. Ruth Bascom was not only chair of the Eugene Bicycling Committee, she was also a city council member and mayor, and her legacy was spearheading the development of Eugene bicycle infrastructure, the crown jewel of which was the riverfront bike path. The last part of that 12-mile network was actually completed in 2003. The '90s, well, they were often referred to by surviving Measure 5 and Measure 47 and 50. It did start out a little bit rough in the early '90s for Parks and Recreation, because that's the time that we went our different ways and ended up in two different departments. But despite the financial challenges of that decade, there were several things that were significant gains in our system. In 1990, we did build Hilliard Community Center for our Adaptive Recreation Program, which at the time was a cutting-edge facility for adaptive recreation. The active Bethel Citizens also found some federal grant money and ceded the first teen court in the area, the West Eugene Bethel Teen Court out of Peterson Barn, which still exists today as an excellent program. And also in 1998, voters did pass the $25 million Parks Acquisition Bond, which also put us in a relationship with 4J to support the building of sports turf fields. In the late part of the 1990s and early part of the new millennium, Mayor Torrey took on the lead in supporting successful, successful back-to-back youth levies, 2037 and 2067, both to serve kids during the critical out-of-school time and show support for our youth in this area. Also in 2006, voters passed another significant Parks Acquisition Bond for $27 million. And finally, in 2006, the Pro's Parks Recreation Open Space Comprehensive Plan was created to help determine the needs of the park and recreation system for over the next 20 years. And Craig Carnegie will go over in a little bit later about our upcoming 2015 Parks and Recreation Systems Plan. So WJ Skate Park is a great reminder that once again, in a time when local and national economics are struggling, Eugene is able to work together to create a significant signature facility for our community. Many hearts and hands were involved in the success of that facility. So thank you. That's a brief look at the Parks and Recreation history through the decades. I could literally go on for hours and talk about many stories of people and events that occurred in our history over the last 100 years, but maybe another time. I think the main theme that I would like to state is that the history of Parks and Recreation in Eugene is a history that's been supported by the people of this community for a long time. They want a strong Parks and Recreation System. It's also important to me to remind myself that in 1927, it was really the people then that saw the purest form of recreation was providing free drop-in services in our parks. And I'm reminded of our current Fund for All program when I think of that, is that's what we continue to do at the purest level in our system. So now, please allow me to take a more specific look about Recreation Services and continue the update of how things have gone for the last five years. So to start with, I'd just like to review some of the values that recreation brings to our community. Recreation is about connecting people. It's about connecting neighbors, and it's about connecting neighborhoods. It is what really happens at community centers. Recreation is about connecting resources. We do more than just recreation. With over 160 community partners, we connect resources where they are needed. We fill gaps in service. Examples of those partnerships include both our school districts, the Boys and Girls Club, kids' sports, senior support services, and programs like Mousa or Kindtree Autism Rocks. We have over 160 of those partnerships. Recreation is also about building safer communities. We know that recreation is a major component in the prevention side of criminal behavior, which has proven to be much more cost-effective than the law enforcement or punishment side of criminal activity. Recreation is about building bodies and brains. We create healthy lifestyles. Recreation is also about improving the quality of life, simply often measured by how happy people are. People choose to live here because of our Parks and Recreation System, and I also believe businesses want to be here because of our Parks and Recreation System, which brings up economic prosperity. The Eugene area is really a mecca of recreation. It's a recreation mecca, and it does stimulate our local economy in many ways. In the Recreation Division, the Parks and Recreation Services is a major contributor to that environment. In recreation, we not only provide opportunities to recreate, but we also create opportunities to hire people to work in recreation. We hire a lot of young people, and we give them job skills training in that area alone. In this past year, 2014, we had over 500 temporary staff working in recreation and learning skills. So what are the trends and challenges in recreation currently? Well, we know we have an aging community. We have an aging nation. There continues to be an increasing demand on serving baby boomers, the majority of which reached 60 years old in 2010, the majority of which do not want to be called seniors. In 2012, our needs assessment, in our needs assessment, local boomers identified affordable services, fitness classes, excursions, and social connectivity as their primary programming priorities. That's what they want. Health and fitness, though despite being Track Town USA, Eugenians, especially our youth, are facing an obesity crisis. 26% of Oregon youth and adults are identified as being obese. Out-of-school time continues to be a critical time in measuring the success of our local youth, and the need to provide healthy, safe places for them during that time. It is also critical that we provide affordable childcare for working families. Nature deficit, I think you've all heard that term before, but our youth are averaging seven hours a day of screen time. Reconnecting youth and their parents, their families, to nature is a growing nationwide trend. Research shows the benefits of physical activity and unstructured play in nature on our brain development and the increased problem-solving capacity of our youth. Inclusion services. The need to provide access to our programs for everyone despite their ability or disability is a priority of ours. Recent data indicates that 17% of today's youth require academic assistance based on the diagnosed or undiagnosed learning disabilities. In our own programs, in the last five years, we have simply doubled the need for inclusion services. We're getting more requests to have that, to fill that capacity in our youth and family programs. Wounded veterans, the number of wounded veterans has increased by 20% in the last decade, 21% in the last decade, to over 3 million veterans. There is an increasing local need for sports and recreation programming for these vets, and we believe that that need will continue to increase with the new Veterans Hospital that's currently being built. I mentioned partnerships earlier, and Eugene Recreation continues to extend its resources to the community by maintaining those partnerships. We believe that has worked in the past, and that will need to continue to work in the future. And then finally, aging facilities. We do have some aging facilities. Are they meeting our programming needs of today? I'll get to that in a few minutes. But first, our greatest challenge in the Recreation Service delivery since 2010 has essentially been maintaining the balance between our increasing revenue targets and keeping our services accessible to all income levels. Since 2010, we have contributed over $700,000 to the general fund budget challenges by restructuring our staffing and becoming more efficient. We have trimmed programming in each of our service areas, and we have increased our revenue target by 22%. It's critical that we maintain our accessibility while also meet the challenges in our financial This is a simple look at our general fund budget for operating budget for FY15. Essentially, we have a $9.3 million operating budget. Fortunately, 66% of that goes to our staff, 53 regular and over 500 temps. And I know it's certainly clear to me that that's where we need to put our resources into our talented and dedicated staff, I guess, to get the most out of how we serve our community. We also have 21% of our costs go to our facility maintenance. We have a revenue target of $2.9 million, which is about a 32% cost recovery rate for what we spend. 53 is the regular staff we have, benefited staff, and 500 is the temporary workforce So our current deferred maintenance is $7.2 million on our facilities. That's defined by our facilities department. And actually, that's actually less than it was in 2010. There's a reason for that. There's a reason for that, and I'll get to it. Since, let's see. The reason for that is our pools. Since 2010, we put $3 million into fixing our pools, both Aqua Hollow and Sheldon, but mostly Sheldon. We've had some seismic improvements for both facilities, but the roof at Sheldon was replaced. And then just a couple of years ago, the piping burst at Sheldon, and we had to replace the entire system along with the heating elements for it. And then both buildings have been, had some work done on energy conservation to make them more energy efficient. Sheldon Pool is, I guess, a classic example that we have, our facilities division keeps our facilities operational and functional. So this is 45 years old, and so it is operational and functional, but we haven't really invested in it to really meet maybe the growing needs of what aquatic services are today. So I want to go back to this slide, I think I'm out of place here, but in your Attachment B as part of your AS information, there is a chart, a spreadsheet, you have it, that talks about our deferred maintenance and our Facility Condition Index. And you'll note that essentially, if you look at that, we have six community centers, three pools, and six special-use facilities. Our Facility Condition Index rating and how a facility rates us is fair, meaning again, we've been keeping up with things with our facilities, and our deferred maintenance is $7.2 million. Okay. Essentially, though, the question comes down to, are our aging facilities meeting the needs of today? The short answer is not quite. For recreation, it's simply not about deferred maintenance. It's more about having facilities that have not evolved to meet the needs of our community. Recreation staff are jacked and happy to be working in the facilities they have. They're, get the most out of every single building they work in. They take a lot of pride in the facilities they work in, because each of those facilities has a bit of history to it, and each of those facilities reflect the character of the neighborhood and the type of service that they offer there. But they're simply not meeting the needs of today. Some of those issues are they're not big enough. There's not enough meeting spaces. Some of those issues are there's not enough large movement or fitness space like at Campbell's Senior Center. Places like the River House, there's no classroom space. And some are simply inefficient. If you look at Sheldon Pool, Sheldon Community Center, they're both separate. They're in the same complex, but they're separate, so they're inefficient. Again, these are our facilities, kind of a running index of them. If you'll note, Amazon Pool was actually built in 1957. We remodeled that in 2001. That remodel is a pretty good example of what renovation can do. So we remodeled that facility, and we created a multipurpose use facility with a lot of recreation amenities, slides, diving boards, hot tubs. We also built it flexible to be 25-meter lap pool and a 50-meter lap pool for both lap swimmers and racing. We had a deep-water tank for water polo, which made a beautiful deep-water tank for fitness. And we had a phenomenal teaching area for teaching swim lessons. So Amazon Pool is a great example of what renovation can do. When we opened that in 2001, attendance jumped by 80,000 people that year, just at that site. And today, Amazon Pool currently has a cost recovery percentage of 64%, as compared earlier to other pools in our entire division, which is the cost recovery is 32%. But really, it's not about necessarily cost recovery as much as the fact that we've evolved. We put that pool in a place where it is serving today's needs, and that's example, the one example in our recreation facilities of us doing that. So what are our other facility needs? Some of those are identified in the 2006 Pro's Comprehensive Plan. We have some renovation master plans for some of our buildings, and other buildings we don't. I'm sorry, this slide has, this makes no sense, we're talking about facilities, but it's a slide I just had to put in there, because it's also just simply reflective of Eugene. Essentially, in the upcoming 2015 Parks and Recreation Systems Plan, we're going to have to get very specific at looking about what are our priorities with our facilities. We also know based on the 2006 Pro's Comprehensive Plan that we have regional gaps in our services, just like we did in the Tex Matzler era. We know that in Santa Clara, we don't have services. We know that in Churchill, Willow Creek area, we do not have a community center, and we know that in the Bethel area, we need more services out there. So in Santa Clara, we have acquired land recently. We do have a location for a future community center. In the Churchill area, we haven't acquired that land yet, but we continue to look. And you also are all aware that in Bethel or West Eugene, we have an agreement currently with the Y that would allow them to build on our land, build a multi-use facility if they can raise the capital funds, and that's a good thing for the Bethel area. So I want to say thank you for listening to what I have to say about the updated version of recreation the last five years, and I want to now turn this over to Craig Carnegie, so he can fill us in on the Parks and Open Space side of things.
All right. Thank you, Craig, and it's great to be here to update you on the State of Eugene's Parks and Natural Areas, the section of the report that we're bringing here. And I want to start by just highlighting a few things that I'm going to be talking about, which are how parks provide tangible benefits to the community, some of the significant challenges that we face maintaining those parks, and also provide some examples of what we're doing to try and meet these challenges. And despite these efforts, our system is stressed and seeing areas of decline. And I'll conclude with the point that if we want great parks that support our city's goals and the seven pillars of Envision Eugene, we need to find new ways to support their operations and maintenance in order to ensure that the benefits that parks provide are there for the future. I want to start by saying it's a great honor for me to be here, to talk on behalf of the Parks and Recreation System, some of the people that enjoy that system and the staff that work hard to maintain it. You heard from Craig about the rich history of our Parks and Recreation System, and a reason that Eugene has such a great history is its inspiring natural setting. From the Buttes and ridges to the rivers and wetlands, people here have wanted access to nature and outdoor recreation, and our Parks and Recreation System provides this access for people. They also provide a whole lot more community benefits, which I'll mention here in a moment. So one of the reasons I'm here in my position today is because of this natural setting and our Parks and Natural Areas. When I first came to Eugene in 1990 as a U of O student hiking the Butte and biking along the riverfront, I was inspired by the beautiful parks and recreational opportunities found here, and it's really no wonder that I went on to study parks and have been working in this field for over a decade. And each of you probably have a favorite park or path, fond memories of being in nature right here in the city, and this may have been what brought you here to Eugene or has kept you here. And we really have so much to be proud of in our Parks and Natural Areas, and these parks are not just a matter of beauty or civic pride, there are real tangible benefits that these areas provide to the City of Eugene. I'd like to talk about those benefits, which are adding economic value to the community, enabling healthy living, spaces for people to engage, and also helping to clean our air and water. I'll start with the economic benefits. I'm going to point you to a report from the Trust for Public Lands, which is a national nonprofit. nonprofit that works to conserve lands and access for people. And they put out a report called Measuring the Economic Value of a City Park System. And they've worked in multiple municipalities across the country, from Seattle to San Diego to Charlotte, North Carolina, up to Boston. And what they found is that parks do in fact provide economic value. One of their points in their report is that people prefer to live near parks, and because they prefer to live near parks, they're willing to pay for it. And so cities are seeing increased property values because of this. In terms of closer proximity to parks, on average, 5% to 20% increases in property values. These values, higher values, mean higher economic returns to the city. In Seattle, in their report, on average, they saw a 5% increase, higher values for homes near parks, and this 5% totaled $34 billion in increased property values. So we see that people are willing to pay more for the value of living near parks, and this willingness adds overall value to this community's economy. Other ways that parks add to economic value is that they stimulate local tourism. According to Traveling County, there were 3.5 million tourists to the county last year, and many of these people come here to use parks and natural areas for outdoor recreation, festivals, and sporting events. And as you know, these tourists spend their money here on our hotels, restaurants, and Another significant economic value is that people and businesses choose to locate in places because of their parks and natural areas, and I believe that's the case here in Eugene. If you look at a lot of the best places and livability rankings from groups like Money Outside or Sunset Magazines, you'll see that a top criteria used to rank best places is how good a city's Parks and Rec system is, and businesses and people move here because of those rankings. Parks also enable healthy living. If there's one indisputable fact about what keeps people healthy, it's exercise, and having places to exercise is important. A National Recreation Parks Association study shows that the more parks a city has, the more people in that city exercise. Also, the closer people live to a park, the more likely they are to exercise. Multiple other studies show that simply being in a park or a natural area reduces stress levels and depression and has a multitude of other healthy benefits. So from these studies and probably your personal experience, we can see that exercising and access to nature in our park system can help keep us all healthy, and it can also save us on trips to the doctor and overall healthcare costs. Other benefits parks provide are spaces for people to engage each other, socialize and be together, have fun, and get to know their neighbor. Our Parks and Natural Areas also provide places for kids to learn from nature. Studies have shown that kids simply learn better when they're out in nature. And this picture is a program that we have in Alton Baker Park called Near by Nature. Many of you may have heard of that. And overall, the cumulative effects of this engaging social spaces is that parks and natural areas help build social cohesion and a stronger sense of community. And the final benefit I'm going to share with you is that parks and natural areas have measurable environmental benefits. They help clean our air and water. Our parks and the vegetation in our parks helps filter runoff and reduces the cost of managing our urban stormwater system. A recent report from Earth Economics states that it showed that it saves the city about $5.5 million annually in water that would otherwise have to be treated. Our parks also help clean our air. It reduces pollutants like carbon dioxide and particulate matter and helps keep our city cool in the summer. And in order to ensure all these benefits are provided to the community, our parks and natural areas need to be well-maintained, and the scope of maintaining a system is quite large and diverse. The Parks and Open Space Division manages over 3,800 acres of public lands, including 46 neighborhood parks, 13 community parks, 46 sport fields, 53 miles of trails and pathways, over 2,500 acres of natural areas, and we also manage vegetation in 30 areas of street medians, 65 open stormwater facilities, and our urban forestry program maintains over 50,000 public street trees. So you can see this is quite a bit to manage. And fortunately, when I first started in this position, I met people like John Clark on staff, people who have deep commitment and passion for their work in parks and natural areas. In fact, just this last summer, John exuberantly helped chart a new trail in the Ridgeline to make a safer, more enjoyable connector between the Upper Amazon Headwaters Trail and across Dillard Road to Mount Baldy. He researched new trail building techniques, found better, more durable materials to use on a footbridge, and worked closely with trail users to get this new trail built. And this awesome addition to the Ridgeline Trail will open to the public next month. Now, John's been with POS for over 30 years, and he brings his passion and commitment to his work every day, and so do so many others on our staff. However, when, soon after I started, I also quickly realized that passion and commitment alone can only go so far when you consider that on top of this large scope of work, there are big challenges that we currently face in the operation and maintenance of the park system. Some of these significant challenges are system expansion over the last decade without a corresponding maintenance funding, simply hasn't kept pace. We also have an aging infrastructure where we've had to apply deferred maintenance. We've seen accelerated deterioration because of that, and increasing costs due to illicit uses, which I'll go into each of those points right now. So expansion without corresponding O and M, let's see here, particularly with the relative to our funding of developed parks. And the expansion since 1998 includes 18 new neighborhood parks, 10 future neighborhood park sites, a future community park site, a new regional playground, that's River Play, the new community park site out of Bethel. There's been 1,200, over 1,200 acres of natural areas added, 2.7 miles of trails, new sports fields, and synthetic turf fields. And the growth in terms of acreage is essentially doubled in terms of what we maintain using general fund dollars. If we calculated for stormwater dollars, you would actually see that acreage be higher than that. However, the general fund for park maintenance and developed parks has actually gone down. The O and M in developed parks has not kept up with growth, and in fact, over the last five years, we've seen a $1.2 million drop in funding. We've also transferred $900,000 in addition to this out of the general fund into stormwater to help with maintenance, to help with the targets on the general fund. So today, we have less staff and equipment than we did in 1998, and this has led to all sorts of service reduction levels, including just this past year, closing of three restrooms, reduced mowing frequencies, significantly reduction in turf irrigation in our neighborhood parks. We've had to reduce trash pickup two days a week across the system. We're considering cutting our nuisance vegetation program, which we'll bring back information on to you in the next few months. And we've had to provide less tree maintenance over the last several months, or several years, which we saw the impact during this last winter storms in our parks, where we had a much higher rate of tree failures in our developed park system. And this has required staff to go in on the back end to take care of those trees and clean up the debris, which has significantly added to the overall cost of maintaining trees in our system. Also, all these reductions have led to a postponement of building any new parks. It would be irresponsible of us to build a bunch of new parks without the adequate O and M to maintain them. So unless we have dedicated funds appropriated specifically to those new developments, we have not been building new parks. Next challenge, we have an aging infrastructure compounded with deferred maintenance. While our operation and maintenance costs are spread thinner and thinner across the system due to growth and budget cuts, some larger maintenance repairs have had to be deferred, and our older parks with aging infrastructure are hit hardest. You all are familiar with this and on the story of our local streets and how the older an asset is, the faster it declines, and the more it costs to rehabilitate. And if you're having to defer maintenance on top of that, it'll decline even faster. An example would be the life cycle of a piece of playground equipment, which might be 25 years. At 10 years, you need to put more and more maintenance into that piece of equipment in order to get the full life cycle. But if you defer, that equipment will likely need replacing a lot sooner. Right now, we see deferred maintenance on most of our park infrastructure, especially on our older parks. That includes things like hardscapes, concrete, lighting systems, irrigation, restrooms, and playground equipment. Compounding those two challenges, we are seeing an increase in illicit activities. And this increase adds to our costs, and these activities include vandalism and graffiti, general dumping and debris in our parks, and also cleaning up camps. These activities cost us more and more each year. Last year, we saw a six-fold increase in the number of illegal camps across the system, and that cost us approximately $1.25 million in fiscal year 14. And these camps are found throughout the system, particularly along our waterways, the Willamette River, Amazon Creek, out in the wetlands. Each of these triangles represents either multiple camps or multiple times that we've had to go to the same location to clean up. And these camps often pose a public health risk and impact the natural environment, and they deter lots of people from using areas within our parks and natural areas. Our employees work with these conditions on a daily basis, and we've done a lot to address these challenges that I just mentioned. And what I'd like to talk to you about right now is how we're attempting to meet these challenges. One thing we're doing is that we are capturing greater efficiencies. We've reorganized staff and reprioritized work focusing on safety and cleanliness and less on green. We've created new maintenance zones that have allowed for fewer vehicle trips across the system and has cut our fuel costs by 25%. We've diversified worker skill sets so more people can do a wider array of work, which equals not only a more skilled, efficient workforce, but fewer people needing to respond to multiple issues at a single location. So for example, if Heidi is out cleaning up the restrooms and sees a problem with irrigation, she can troubleshoot and possibly repair that as opposed to having to call out an irrigation technician to deal with this. We're also utilizing technology. Our maintenance management system allows us to prioritize and track service requests. Staff can receive service requests in the field and respond while they're out there. We have geographic information systems to map the locations of our assets, log conditions, and track their work, track maintenance work, and this allows for better management practices and planning by more precisely understanding asset needs throughout the system and better able to prepare and mobilize before heading into the field. Other things that we've done, we've significantly boosted the work with our volunteers and aimed that work towards our core park maintenance services. Last year, in 2013, we utilized over 4,100 volunteers in our parks. They spent about 10,000 hours there doing all sorts of maintenance work, and that equated to about a $200,000 in-kind donation to help out in our maintenance. Our staff also, just this last spring, worked with Opportunity Village to reopen Sladden Park restroom. We're also building stronger partnerships, working with groups like the Eugene Parks Foundation, as well as Rotary Clubs. And over the last five years, we've seen about $700,000 in grants and donations come in to help improve our parks, like Owens Rose Garden, Washington Spray Park, and of course, WJ Skate Park. And the final thing that we've done to attempt to meet these challenges is that internally, our staff are working better together, building stronger collaboration across divisions. The Parks and Open Space Division works with the Recreation Services on a number of programs and projects like WJ. We also work with Eugene Police Department on developing this program like Park Watch, which allows someone on the park to send in either a service request for maintenance or if they see an issue that they need to go into EPD, all of us have the advantage of seeing where these hot spots or problem spots are and responding a little bit more targeted and efficiently. Despite these efforts of being more efficient and becoming a smaller, leaner organization, resources are still being stretched thinner and thinner. The system is stressed, and conditions of many developed parks are in decline. Our staff regularly do park condition assessment ratings. Over the last five years, they've done these assessments in developed parks, and they look at things like overall cleanliness, safety, equipment, hardscapes, landscaping. And what they've recently found is that 68% of our parks are in worse condition, our developed parks are in worse condition today than they were five years ago. So you can see some of the challenges we face with system expansion and inadequate maintenance funds, aging infrastructure and deferred maintenance, increase in costs responding to increases in illicit uses, and also how we're trying to meet these challenges with innovations and efficiencies, such as working better together with our partners. And yet, we still see significant challenges. And in summary, to both of these reports, you've heard about the legacy of this city creating great parks and recreation facilities. We also know the benefits that Parks and Rec provides to the community and the value that it brings, and that both Parks and Recreation Divisions are doing a lot to constantly improve and deliver high-quality services, but the system can and needs to do better in order to continue to meet the needs of the community and secure a positive future for Parks and Recreation in Eugene. And now I'd like to conclude by just briefly talking about what our system might be in the future, and I want to set the tone with two statements. One is from Envision Eugene, which you may have heard recently, that over the next 15 years, the city's population is expected to possibly grow by as much as 35,000 people. And another is by a luminary economist, John Crompton, who studies the impacts of parks on communities, and he states that nowhere in the world will you find a great city without great parks. Now Eugene has the foundation of a great park system thanks to that legacy of the last 100 years, and over that period, people here envisioned what this city could be, seized opportunities, and built what we benefit from and enjoy today. Right now, this community is poised for greater prosperity, which will provide us opportunities to build an even greater city, and seizing opportunities for greater parks and recreation facilities is needed for this to happen. In 2015, we're going to begin a community engagement and planning process to update the city's Parks and Recreation System Master Plan. We will be listening to the needs of the community, setting priorities and strategizing on how we can get there in a way we can afford while creating an inspiring vision the community can be proud of. These discussions will include things like a rejuvenated central waterfront park system that includes both Alton Baker Park and a future urban riverfront park adjacent to the E-Web Master Plan site. It'll include talking about how to build a community park with a community center in Santa Clara, a new regional sports complex out in the Bethel Golden Gardens area, and what a nature park might look like up in the Suzanne Arley site back behind Lane Community College. We'll also be looking at ways to build and provide a new community center in the Churchill Willow Creek area, as well as new developed parks on River Road in Santa Clara areas, as well as North Eugene. Also, of course, more trails and making more connections. So in conclusion, the future could be very bright for the Parks and Recreation System and this community, but we won't be able to get there unless we start to sustainably maintain the system we currently have. We'd like to return to council in the near future with funding options to maintain and improve our Parks and Recreation facilities, and I would just refer you to the motion that was drafted in your action item summary for that. And again, I appreciate the time for both Craigs to come up here and talk with you. And we've got some time, I believe, for questions and answers.
Thank you. Okay, Council Clark in the queue, Council Evans in the queue, Council Brown in the queue, Council Zelenka, the prior. I just want to say that I think we've gone through a pretty tough period here, and there isn't a part of us that hasn't been dramatically affected by the economic conditions we find ourselves under. And I know when I first came on as mayor and we did our community surveys, there was nothing that people valued more in their Parks and Recreation System. It's something that we identify with as part of ourselves. So it really does seem to me that we do have to take care of the infrastructure we have and find a way to bring it back up to what it needs to be. And I also think people want to see these things. They've been waiting so long for, to move towards reality. So I really look forward to this continuing discussion. And I know you're going to go out and work with the community, but I hope honestly that you will call on each of us to join you in this effort as you talk to people, not, I would suggest that even you ask us to step up to this conversation at an early stage, not after you have the conversation with the community, but that we join you in the conversation with the community in a really focused way. And I really, each of us has parts of this that we care about deeply in our community. I know that Betty cares deeply about Hendrix Park. I know that Mike has been working- I know that Mike has been working on what's going to happen out there in the Santa Clara area forever. I know Bethel has some real assets, but there's more to come that Greg's so interested. I could say that about each of you. So I'm just hoping, hoping, hoping that you'll take this moment to say, yep, this is where we find ourselves, but get that vision out in front of us of where we want to be and how we get there in a really doable way. And I think you'll hear their ideas, but I just think it's really important you get us at your side early on in the process. Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with what the mayor said, and thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. It was a lot of hard work to put that together. Appreciate it. My initial reaction to watching that is I think it dramatically underestimates the challenges that are before us and that we ought to be taking on and how we ought to be thinking about this. I think it's actually bigger than presented. I think there's a couple pieces that I'd like to get more information about as time goes on. One of the things, to begin with, one of the things you said, that PSU population study projection of 34,000 additional people was five years ago. And when we do the next one, which will be imminently here, if my colleague, Mr. Zelenka, is right, and we see climate refugees and all manner of other things, then I think the next numbers we'll see will be much bigger. And as a result, our formal planning process asks us to put things together like the Parks SDC lists and the plans that we have for serving that growth appropriately. And one of the mechanisms we pay for things like that is with SDC charges, and then we build out the parks and the time we can in order to address that. And my recollection of previous conversations is that we're about 5% of the way through that Parks, that 20-year Parks SDC list and about halfway through the time period. One of my concerns is that we're going to get to the end of that 20-year window, and we're going to see lawsuits because we didn't get the things done that we've been charging people SDCs for for years, and that we haven't had and we haven't given you adequate resources to get those things done. So I want to see us address this problem in a very holistic way with some of these larger issues. Another one is, as our community grows, as the people in the River Road and Santa Clara area are more and more likely to annex and become part of the city, how we deal with the River Road Park District is another question. Those folks have developed a wonderful gem in their area that they want to see maintained. And one of the issues with annexation of some of those folks isn't that, you know, isn't what will happen to that so much as joining us, they want to make sure we have a reasonable commitment like they do for the next 40 years. And so, I only have 20 seconds. I'll need a second round, Mayor, but I would like to see us address this differently. One of the ways you take one-time money and make it ongoing money is with an endowment fund. And we have some of the country's best experts at doing that right over here at the University of Oregon. These guys are good at it. And I'd like to see us, when we're talking about ongoing funding possibilities, start looking at that as one of the options. How do we create that? I'll need a second round, please.
I got you down. Councilor Evans?
Thanks, Mayor. I want to thank Craig and Craig for the Craig and Craig Show. You guys do amazing work. I had the opportunity this past August to go out with both of you and other staff with Public Works to not only tour parks, but also tour some of the other Public Works facilities. And I'd like to encourage, if the rest of my council colleagues have not taken that tour lately, to, it's periodically good to be able to see and engage what is going on and what the backstage story is, what's happening out there, and the kind of work that you guys are doing out there, which I think is incredibly important. Couple of issues that, you know, are, you know, hot button issues for me, and that is to underscore your report in terms of growing our capacity within the park system, I think is critical. I also think that there are some unique opportunities that we have to develop the system in a way that will create economic development opportunities. And I know that council polling serves on Travel Lake County's Board, and one of the issues that we have is capacity in terms of sports fields and recreation facilities that could encourage future economic development opportunities with hosting tournaments and other similar kinds of events-driven opportunities that places like Salem and Medford currently are enjoying. I would like to have an opportunity to, you know, drive five minutes or 10 minutes or 15 minutes from my house to take my daughter to a soccer tournament instead of driving to Salem and depositing, you know, my discretionary income in Salem's pocket and do it here in Eugene. And I know that there are a lot of families that are in that same boat, not just soccer facilities. We're talking about softball, baseball. We need to have more facilities. And as we look at indoor facilities as well, there's significant pressures on those systems because of lack of practice time and other things. And I probably need a second round as well, Mayor. But, you know, we need to develop that capacity at the same time providing opportunities for us to have public-private partnerships where we can extend our capacity for operations and maintenance of those facilities.
You, Councilor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I would like to thank Craig and Craig, both for the historical review and for the outline of the current situation. I'm, you know, the Spencer Butte levy of 1938 that you mentioned, I'm real familiar with that because that was the same year that the voters approved a levy for, to purchase the land that eventually became Civic Stadium and also about half of South Eugene High School. So I just think it's, I just want to mention that I just have tremendous respect for the commitment and vision of the people back in 1938 because it was still the Depression, and they did two tremendous things when they passed both those levies. You know, I think it's good that we're having this discussion today because it's almost ironic to me because on Monday, we passed, the council majority approved taking $435,000 a year from Public Works, from the reserves, for six years to raise 2.5 million to add on a fourth-story, 9,000 square feet of shelled space, not even usable space, on the New City Hall project. And that will take, you know, 1.5 million to make it usable at some point down the road. So what we've done, I mean, you know, we look at the deferred maintenance, we look at the vandalism, we look at closing two restrooms, and we go, jeez, we can't afford, I mean, you know, we don't have enough money to do anything about this. To me, it's like we're not connecting the dots here. It's like, why would we take, why would we voluntarily take $435,000 a year out of the budget that could be used to address these issues right now? Why would we take that money and put it in the New City Hall, which it won't even be occupied for many years? It's, you know, it's, we're not, we didn't help the situation for the parks because 145,000 comes out of the road fund, 145,000 comes out of stormwater, and that's a direct connection with parks, park maintenance, and 145,000 from wastewater. So, you know, it's just kind of ironic to have this presentation two days after that action, which I think just crippled, crippled our ability to, you know, deal with these problems that you outlined in your report. Thank you.
Councilor Zelenka?
Yeah, great presentation, Craig squared. I love the history part. It's cool to look back of where we've come from and see how much we've actually done. We have great parks, we have great facilities, and we have great rec programs, but it's all been built up over time, and now we're at the point where the funding issue keeps coming up. It's an issue that just doesn't go away. I put out a work session poll, I thought, two years ago, talking about this. We talked about it then, it was getting worse, and now we're talking about it again, and it's still getting worse. And I guess the state of our, what I take away is, we've got great facilities, we've got great programs, and we've got great parks, but they're in decline. And unless we do something about it, they're going to continue to get worse. The troubling statistic is 68% of our parks being in worse shape than they were five years ago is something we should all take note of. I think you guys have made great efforts to make things work in an era declining resources with the efficiencies that you created, the cuts that we've made, the volunteers we're using, the public-private partnerships, or all the things that people would say, well, first you got to do those things. I think we've done those, and we've squeezed a lot of blood out of the rock, but that can only go so far. And I think I'd like to get your opinion about where we are with that, if there's more to do in that area and how much more. But to me, there's kind of two funding issues here. One is about the O and M, and one is about the build-out of new parks. And I think we're better served if we connect those two things and make them one issue about funding, although two parts. And my experience, and what I pushed for really hard on the successful road bond vote, was that a successful effort needs three things. It needs, to get more support from the public, it needs three things. It needs to be, it needs to benefit everybody in the city, so everybody has to get a benefit. That's what we did with the road fund. So geography needs to be an important part of it. It needs to be a reasonable and modest amount of money so that people don't go, oh my God, they can say, yeah, that's a lot, but I can deal with that. And then third, it needs to have a specific immutable list of projects and uses. We can't just say, just fund parks, we'll figure out what we're going to do with the money. We need to be very specific about it. People want to know exactly what they're buying. They want to know that we're going to get this park, this park, this park, this thing fixed, this thing fixed, these things will be better, have better maintenance, and it needs to be something that can't be screwed around with. It needs to be something that we can all say, yes, that's exactly what we're going to buy, and I think that's okay, and it's the right amount of money, and I'll vote for it.
Councilor Pryor?
Thank you. Actually, I do think there are many parallels between our traffic, transportation infrastructure needs and our park needs and many of the same kinds of issues. And so I think what Alan's talking about really resonates in terms of a lot of the same kind of thinking that needs to go on. When you talk about the benefits of park and recreation, I hearken back again to John Crompton, who is the guru of Parks and Recreation. And one of the things he talks about is people being relatable or being able to relate to the benefits of park and recreation. The closest, most easiest way to relate is at a personal level. What is the payoff for me personally? And then what is the payoff for a group of people or a population? And then finally, what is the payoff to the community as a whole? And they all need to be considered, but the one that I understand objectively is the benefit to the community, but the one I understand in my gut, the one that causes me to open my wallet, the one that gets my commitment and engagement, is the benefit to me personally. And figuring out how this system in need relates to me personally, I think, is our challenge. Because I cannot at objective level say, yeah, the playgrounds need fixing and the concrete is cracked and something is, but how does that relate to me personally? Am I going to this park? Am I visiting this park? We have got to demonstrate to people that there is a personal connection between what we need to do in our park facilities and how it impacts their lives individually. I mean, Greg's story is perfect. He's happened to take his kid to another city to participate in sports because he can't do it here. That's a very personal thing. And I think each one of us, if we spend half a second, can think of a personal impact for the benefit of our Parks and Recreation System, whether it's exercise, or whether it's walking, or whether it's the property value of my own home, the neighborhood livability, what is that benefit? Because when I want to think about funding sources, and that's what we're going to be asking you to do, is to go and find a way to help finance this system, I think when we ask people to step up and support it, they'll say, yeah, I understand the community benefit, yeah, I get that at the objective level, but that's not enough to get me to open up my heart or my wallet. What's going to get me to be supportive is the real solid understanding that this pays off for me at a personal level or a family level. And I think it does, and I think that's the case we need to make. Just as in the transportation system, I drive on those roads. That is a personal payoff for me. The axle of my car doesn't break, the tires don't get holes in them because when I drive on the streets and they work, it helps me personally. There is a nexus here, and I think it's a very important one. And for me, our ability to pay for the parks that we have is that O and M piece that is the personal element. Just buying more land is not the personal element. Taking care of the parks we have is.
Councilor Surratt, then Councilor Taylor.
Thank you. Thanks. I concur with, great presentation. Really appreciate the creative thinking and hard work that you have put in as heads of your department, but also the work that your staff has done to really stretch our dollars and keep our parks looking as good as they do, considering where we are in terms of O and M and the examples of illicit activities that you mentioned, which are frankly heartbreaking. So I really want to appreciate that. I think you both really hit on the important points about the many ways our Parks and Recreation System enhances our city's health economically, physically, emotionally, culturally, all of those really important nexus, nexuses. And we, you know, we really do have a system that we can be proud of because in large part of the past investments that people in this community made. And I just wanted to highlight two points of pride in my ward. I would say that the WJ Skate Park is an example of us taking an underutilized asset and updating it for a modern era, and the usage there has just been amazing in terms of the activity in that park, the positive family activity in that park that's going on now. And then another park in our city that I think is a little bit maligned and not appreciated and is actually a real jewel is Skinner Butte Park, particularly the upper-level part. It's a mecca for bird watching, it's great views, it's a really beautiful place to relax. And I don't think a lot of people really recognize it's there, right in the middle of our urban core, this really nice, small, neat little park. So I just want to give Skinner Butte a shout out. You know, so as I mentioned, our community has a significant emotional and psychic investment in our parks right now, and we really need to figure out how to match that with actual dollars. And I absolutely agree with Councilor Zelenka that keeping the O and M piece and the development of our acquired lands but not yet able to develop lands connected in the conversation is very important. And we need to, I think, identify from an ongoing revenue source. I sympathize with Councilor Brown's position, but the dollars he was referring to were really one-time dollars and not an ongoing source of revenue. They were reserve dollars that Public Works was going to utilize. So for in my mind, that's not a sustainable revenue source. And because of the overall financial challenges, these departments, you know, have taken, as you've shown us, a real significant hit in the budget, and if we're not prepared to start reinvesting in these assets, they will not continue to make us proud for much longer. So I'm supportive of looking for funding options along the lines of what Councilor Zelenka was mentioning, to invest in needed maintenance and developments in those parks we've already purchased. And I did have a question, if we were to look at new revenue sources, how would those connect with the update that you guys are about to take on your pros plan? And I don't need a second round.
So Councilor Taylor?
Oh, I have, that was my question.
I think that the revenue strategies that we would bring back immediately would more address the annual operating maintenance gap that we see right now to maintain what we have. And then we will also be looking at future funding strategies throughout this Parks and Recreation System Plan update to look long-term in terms of both how we maintain what we have, but also whatever we'd like to bring in in the future.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Taylor?
Thank you. That was very interesting. I think it's inspiring also that people, back when the population was under 50,000, were acquiring land, which we now have the benefit of. And I think it's very important that we continue to acquire land because that's something you can't make again. You can, if you neglect the maintenance for a while, you can make up for it, but you can't make new land for parks. And it's important that we do something for the people who will come after us, just as those people did. If you think, it's already been pointed out, but during the Depression is when people were doing things that have had lasting value. were doing things that have had lasting value for us. I was very glad that our last bond issue was just for acquisition, because that was the most important thing, and we still are acquiring some land from that. Some questions. Oh, one big question I've always had is, why is the Parks Department in Public Works? You are from two different departments, right?
I think during the challenges of the '90s, that it was looked at as an efficiency move, based on what they were providing, how their parks was working with Public Works. So it's been a challenge, but I think that the staff, basically, the people in both divisions, really take a large effort in being collaborative and planning things together. So...
I can see that, but it just seems that there's so much in Public Works that maybe parks should be moved.
Well, it's interesting, essentially, that although we're in different departments, the community sees us as one. When they come to me, they say, Parks and Recreation. And they come to Craig, and they say, Parks is Recreation. So for us, it's like we just have to create that invisible space that says, when you say Parks and Recreation, you're speaking to both of us in that way.
Yeah. Okay, is there any plan to reopen Westmoreland Community Center, ever? I know it's being used for something else, but you talk about creating new community centers, and there isn't one in that spot now.
It's interesting. It's currently being utilized well, and they do need a new facility. The Boys and Girls Club is bursting into the seams. And there has been thoughts. I know if you speak with Bev Smith, you know what she would really love in this community, and that's a multipurpose fieldhouse, and...
We're getting that, aren't we?
Maybe.
So, maybe, then that's what this, you know, this, in 19 -- the systems plan we're looking at next year will include definitely taking a look at those needs and those gaps.
I suppose you remember when we had a, was it a bond issue in '97?
Eight.
I'm not talking about acquisition, I'm talking about the levy that failed, because not enough people voted. To keep the recreation system, we had something on the ballot in, I think, '97.
Right, and then I think in '99, and then 2002.
No, we didn't put this one on again. And it failed because not 50% of the, it passed, but not enough people voted.
Right. Fifty percent required. Fifty percent majority.
And we did not put that on the ballot again, unfortunately. Failed by one vote, the vote two put it on the ballot again. And we've never done that again.
We haven't.
That was for recreation, and we lost a lot of the recreation facilities at that time. So that's something I think we should think about again, restoring adult recreation to a level at which it once existed. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
I'm going to leave in a couple of minutes and turn this over to Chris, and we have a second round, Clark, Evans, and Zelenka. And I did, a couple of comments. I think we've talked a lot about parks, but recreation is really important, and recreation is a lot about how we use the property, the facilities that we have. And I know from a lot of the things that I do, how much access to all the different opportunities in the community matters to people, that it doesn't matter what your ability is, that you'll be able to fully participate. It doesn't matter what your income is, you'll be able to participate. It doesn't matter what your age is, you'll be able to participate. Those are really important things, and people come from all over the world here to learn what we do in this community. It makes me very proud, and I think it's a very important asset. And as we head out in this conversation, I think it's really important, we have to figure out with the community how to get the resources to pay for what we want, but I think if we get bogged down in a money conversation and not a conversation about what we really want, it's kind of the wrong conversation, because it'll be all about how much money people want to make available, as opposed to what people want to have happen, and we'll find the resources to support. So I hope we'll focus our conversation here at the table and out in the community in a way that's about what we all aspire to have for our community, as opposed to what way can we get money. I just think it's not a, that's not a good conversation. And the other thing I would say is, there will always be things, when we make policy, that we have agreement and disagreement with around this table. But it behooves us to be very thoughtful about putting negative comments into something when we're really trying hard to move forward, to build something really positive for the community, and I hope we will think about that as we start down this road as well. Thanks.
So going into a second round, Mike.
Thank you. I was just kind of thinking about what the mayor said there and how to apply it to what I wanted to say. I agree with part of it. What we have in front of us is a vote, and I'll vote in favor of the motion to send you guys off to come up with more funding options, but I caution you, and I hope you'll hear this. Over the last couple of years, last few years, we've done less, and we've cut back. And I really think the only successful way we'll deal with our parks in the next few years is to step up our game. Having run a lot of kinds of campaigns in my professional life, and in our sister-city successful ones, to build things and to open things, I know that a specific list, like we did with our road fund, is going to be great. But with a Parks Bond, I absolutely believe it will not be successful in Eugene. In the last year or two, we, it's my belief that we've made decisions around use of our Parks Bond money that give the voters pause. And I believe if we put a Parks Bond out, it will not pass, or a levy, for that matter. I believe that we've said in the past, we'll do X with the money from a Parks Bond, and we've done something else. And I really caution you that I think that's not a good approach, and we're kind of standing at a crossroads. Because there are a lot of conversations that I hear, and people talking to me about the wisdom of the creation of a larger Parks District as a way to deal with this issue. I think that's a bad idea. While I understand some of the values of, and some of the ways that could be successful, it takes the governance piece out, and we lose, as a city, I think, a connection to a lot of the investments that have been made over the years that you see there, and certainly this council wouldn't be a part of that decision-making if a Parks District were created. So I don't think either of those are effective solutions to step up and do something better. And everything that you showed us that we're proud of is when we did, when we stepped up and did something bigger. Again, I encourage you to consider that there are people with resources in our community and out, that would have an interest in the idea of creating an endowment fund to support our parks. There are people interested in the expansion in specific areas of our parks that would be interested in being involved in that. I'm aware of at least two. There's also the idea that in '16, we'll have the world here, and we can engage them in the process of how to help with the ongoing funding in our endowment fund, if we were to create one.
Thank you. Next, I will have Greg, and then Alan, and then Claire will put the motion up. So Greg.
Thanks, Chris. And quickly, in response to Counselor Taylor's query about why parks moved over into Public Works, in the early 1990s, I was on the planning commission, there was an efficiency move made to be able to consolidate, particularly those services as regard to parks maintenance was concerned, and that Public Works would be better positioned to handle that than it being co-located in, you know, a Parks and Rec deal. That's why library services and recreation became library services and recreation, and not Parks and Recreation anymore. So just to point that out. A couple of things. Do we, you guys talked about a strategy to address the $4 billion in cleanup costs that we are currently incurring and ever increasing as a result of illegal activities, camping, et cetera, within the parks. I think that that's one of the ways that we can recoup efficiencies, if we can particularly develop a strategy, you know, concurrent with public safety slash the police and the fire departments, to be able to, you know, reduce some of that impact on our park system. That's one. And then, secondly, you know, just doing a couple of tours of the park system over the last couple of years that I've been on council, one of the things that's come up for me that particularly is disturbing and resonates with me is the issue of employee safety, in terms of our Public Works staff, our park staff, and being able to go out and engage and do their jobs, and then be confronted with individuals who have a variety of mental and other issues that, you know, cause conflict and possible danger to our staff. So I don't know what is specifically being done about that, but, you know, the last thing that I want to see is one of our employees getting hurt as a result of, you know, trying to do their job and then engaging in a confrontation with somebody who, you know, shouldn't be there in the first place. So if you could respond to both of those questions. And then the last thing would be in regard to Counselors Zelenka's comments, I think that you do have to tie some level of tangibility to any kind of bond measure or levy that is put forth before the voters in order for us to be able to, you know, be successful in any of those kinds of efforts. People need to see what they're getting and what they're paying for.
If, in the interest of time, do you have a short answer, or would you want to prepare something more detailed?
Well, I think to give a thorough answer, I'd probably rather prepare something in a little bit more detail, if you don't mind.
That's right.
I can give you something off the cuff and address that, but you probably would appreciate a little bit more depth to it.
Yeah, I think it would probably, it'd probably take more of a long-form answer than a short one.
Yeah, then you can share that with all of us, that'd be fine. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay, Alan.
I did have a question that was embedded in my last one, which is, how much more can you squeeze out of the system?
Well, I think our mantra is that we're always looking to improve, and so we're doing the best we can, looking at every angle, a way to increase efficiencies and do things better, and we'll continue to do so. As far as our capacity to make those improvements is going to be incremental at this point. I think we've taken, you know, the low-hanging fruit, so to speak, and a lot more, but I think we'll continue to find some levels of efficiencies at every corner, and obviously with technology improvements and that sort of thing. And also, I think we'll see some benefits from what we've done to diversify the skillsets in our staff and that sort of thing. So, yeah, there's always room for some level of improvement. It's probably not going to solve all of our problems, though.
Right, it won't solve the problem, that's the bottom-line point. An issue that both Mike and I brought forward, which was SDCs and how this impacts this, maybe we can get a memo from you guys instead of taking time now to discuss the status of that, where it's going, and how, and what, how that impacts this overall picture, and what the status of the projects are and timeline. There was, you mentioned, you had a graph up there about the homeless camps, and it jumped dramatically in one year. I kind of questioned that number. I think that more may have been, those camps, in my mind, have been here all along. These people just didn't all of a sudden come into our community, they've been here all along. I think it's more that we're paying attention to it and that we're reporting it more, as opposed to it actually just dramatically increased. Can I just buy that?
It came out of BLM, and, oh, God.
Some of that may have come out of some large sweeps in terms of cleanups throughout the area, but, I mean, we're regularly going through the park system and talking with folks and explaining to them what the circumstances are around the need to move on, but as those camps stay there for a period of time, you know, obviously, the impacts that you saw in terms of environmental and public health, we need to move those people on, and so we do it on a regular basis. So whether it's a surprising increase or not, it's hard to say.
Yeah, I don't think it's a real increase, I think they've always been here. I think we're just paying attention. Kind of like when you start to think about buying a car, all of a sudden, you see that car everywhere. When you start talking about homelessness, you start seeing it. The, I think it's important for us to develop numerous options, and not, as Mike said, just one option, like a bond or a levy. So the endowment, changes that you can make, efficiencies, levy, bond, and all of the above strategy is what I intend to have when you bring back information for us about funding. So with that understanding, I'll move to request the city manager to develop funding options for city council consideration for the FY16 budget to sustainably maintain park and rec facilities.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, real quick, and I realize we've got less than five minutes, so I'll make this short. The mayor made a comment, I unfortunately wasn't able to respond to it, because she was basically, I think, trying to prioritize what we want over, you know, everything else. But part of the conversation about what we want needs to include is how are we going to pay for it? I mean, my dad used to have the saying, you can want in one hand and do something with the other, and see which one is full first, but, you know, we've got to have some way to pay for it, so we need to look at that. And then, to address Mike's comment about the park bond money that was used for other purposes, I agree 100% that we weren't true to the voters on that one. But I think a good example of how we've changed that is the road fund.
Or streets.
Where we have specific items that we're paying for with specific money. We have a citizen review panel on that, we have reports back on that, so, you know, there's obvious oversight on that. And then I hope, like Alan was saying, that we look at other funding sources other than just adding more tax money onto our citizens, because that's, that will not be very popular. And I kind of would like to explore the endowment idea a little bit more, and the internal sources, the efficiencies, and, you know, the vote we did on Monday is basically coming as a result of lowering the reserve level of the Public Works Department. You know, that's another way we can look at it. And I agreed with that move, lowering the level of the reserves, because what it is now is you need to pay for it, pay for it now, or pay much more for it later. So, you know, that's just another way that we can maybe look at other sources other than just a levy, I think.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Is that different from the motion in the agenda?
The motion that actually Alan made is the one that's at the back of the AIS.
With the clarification, that's plural.
Pretty much the same thing.
It's basically the same thing, yeah. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising their hand. Any opposed?
Yeah, I voted in favor.
In favor, okay, so it's eight in favor, none in opposition, it passes. That concludes our business for today. Thank you very much for the presentation, it was very informative. We are adjourned.